Good evening, my name, in case you don't know, is Dave Forrester. And this is the third time I've hosted the candidates forum. And I'd like to start off by first thanking the Dunsmere High School for allowing us the use of the facility. Thank the Dunsmere Chamber of Commerce and the Dunsmere Rotary for sponsoring this. For, let's see, the Siskiyou County Media Council for taking it and hopefully presenting it on the internet. It is going to be available on the internet.
It's live right now.
It's live right now. Oh, right. And they would like to thank Mario Ravino for doing most of the labor on this. Alright, so the way it's going to operate tonight is we'll start by having each of the candidates give a short little statement, and then we'll begin the forum. And we'll rotate who answers the questions first. Everyone gets to answer the same question. So if you submitted a question that was specific to one individual, the people who are at the table back there taking questions, they will rephrase that question so it's appropriate for all of the people to answer. And then I'm hoping at the end of this, the candidates will stick around for a few minutes, and if you would like to talk to them individually, you'll have an opportunity to do that. So once again, thanks for coming, and if you're tuning in live, thanks for paying attention to our city election. Before I go, I should ask one question, and I don't see any, but there are no other candidates running for any in their office in the audience. If there were, I was going to let them speak for a couple of minutes. Alright, so we'll start with Mario.
Good evening. My name is Maran Shanta. Most of you have known me. I am, you know, I am being coven. I have been on the city council for two and a half years. I was a volunteer first. And due to a government home, I had to actually run on my own. And was elected by the District Committee during the, yeah, when my elections in 2016. And thank you for all your votes and for having me. I am, by most standards, a recent transplant here, well, we've been here about eight or nine years. I know people that live here that have families going back for years, but I came, I have, I have, I know the area for quite a few years before that, and so I have family in Mount Chaska. So I have traveled through here now while I was still working. I retired here by choice. I own this little town. Not crazy about the canyon and feeling a little close to it, but I like the people here. I feel a personal bond. I've traveled all over the world, and this is where I took this to recover. I have been active in Dunsmere organizations prior to being on council. When I was on the fire city council, I managed to give grants to fuel production. I managed to get a grant to write down a wildfire protection plan, which I handed over to the city. I have been working with the botanical gardens. And once I moved into the city limits, I became involved in the local politics. I don't know what else I can tell you. I'm a grandmother, obviously. I encourage young, young people that move to Dunsmere to get involved in local politics because the lifeblood of this community depends on new ideas and non-ideas, and not just somebody that just has the time to do it, which tends to be people that have retired. Without that young blood, it's impossible to grow. I've really enjoyed the interaction, you know, that I've had the last two years with Bruce and with Josh, who bring a different perspective to, to our discussions. I'm going to hand this over to Giuliana now.
Thank you. And good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us tonight, and those who are watching on the market, thank you for obtaining some interest in Dunsmere politics. My name is Giuliana Lucchese. I am a very recent, even more recent transplant here to the Dunsmere area. I've been living here for a little bit, over a year, in North Dunsmere. I am originally from the Midwest, from the suburbs of Milwaukee. I transferred out to California for a job with the city of Mount Chaska as their city planner. I have a background in applied science, in plumbing, technology, in plant genetics, and then I got my master's degree in planning from the University of Iowa prior to coming here. When I was looking for jobs in the Midwest, I was kind of disheartened by what the opportunity was, and so I started applying to a couple of different places throughout the United States. Georgia, Oklahoma, and the Mount Chaska region just happened to pop up and took it on the whim, flew out on a Thursday, started work on Monday. So, and I haven't looked back since, and it's been wonderful. And I, I really love the area. My significant other now is a fifth generation, Mount Chaska-Dunsmerean, and our house is, it's inherited from his family, and it's been a really great opportunity to connect with people and really become more cemented in this community, and that's what it really is. I'm, I'm really focused on building off of that. I know I work for the city of Mount Chaska, but I love living in Dunsmere, and that should be noted. I think it's a very family-friendly place, and I think that's something we can build off of, connecting with our high school to enhance the community and give opportunity to youth and have them start to participate in politics more in the community itself. I think that's how we're going to keep our young people here, as well as bring them back after college to, you know, start their own businesses, fill some of the slots of jobs that we see occurring over the South County area. In addition to that, like I said, I have a background in planning, and so I have quite a bit of experience working with grant situations, the state. I just got back from the San Diego conference for running professionals in the state of California. And I think there's a really big focus on this area, especially with wildfire situation. Forest management is a very big topic at the state right now, and I think Dunsmere is in a, in a position to really take advantage of that and start to invest in our forest help, as well as our private property owners, and really bring up those values. I know there's been a lot of transgression felt by some of the residents because of the too late process we've been through raising rates, and that's very unfortunate, but you know, there are things that we can do together to build up our property base, to build up our community, to really enhance that value without taxing our local area too much. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Matthew Bryan. I'd like to thank all the citizens here for attending this debate. It's wonderful, this whole process, running for city council so far, and your involvement means everything. And thank you Rotary for hosting this event. I was born and raised in this region. I grew up, most of the time, between Mount Chaska and Weed. I attended Golden Eagle Charter School, and then at the age of 18, Dunsmere Rotary was actually kind enough to sponsor me for a Rotary Youth Exchange to Switzerland. And that was a very meaningful experience, and I'm very grateful to the Dunsmere Rotary. The Dunsmere Rotary stands out in a world of Rotary Clubs, and they are an inspiration. I went to school at Tom Saquonis College in Southern California, got a bachelor's degree in liberal arts, and then three years ago, I moved back to this area. It wasn't clear at that time whether I could stay here, whether I could return to my native home and make it work here. It's not the expectation typically for people who are brought up here and go to college to come back and be able to live here. It's unexpected. But I'm proud to say that I wanted to stay, and I enjoyed every second of it, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to get involved and to make it easier for people to choose to live here, to make it easier for those who do live here to live here and prosper. And I look forward to bringing the new vitality, energy, and patience to the job of city council if I am so elected. And thank you so much for this opportunity.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Peter Art. I think I know most of the people in the audience, so I'm going to sort of chunky my rich and colorful history. In essence, I've lived in Dunsmere for about 12 years. I arrived in Dunsmere because of my love for the community and the river and the architecture in Dunsmere's historic district. Not knowing anybody in town, I was recruited to serve on the Dunsmere City Council the year I moved here in 2008. By a vote of my colleagues on the council, I served as mayor of the city of Dunsmere in 2010. I was recalled in that year, and I will simply say about that incident, a fair comment would be, Dunsmere didn't really know Peter, and Peter didn't really know Dunsmere. Much has changed, I think, in the last 10 years, which sort of leads into one of my proudest about for the time I've been in Dunsmere. And I would say, after my two kids, the thing I'm most proud of is seeing the vision of revitalizing Dunsmere actually occur. And the evidence of that is not just talk and statistics. If you walk around the historic district, look at the Cornet Building, with small businesses, a solar array on the top that meets all the electrical needs of the building and the tenants. Look at the Siskiyou Arts Museum, an empty double building that now is a vibrant museum that attracts people, young and old, from all over the world. Let's say this is world-class. Look at the Dunsmere Community Garden, and the fact that we're trying to unite the community to really deal with not those who are the most well-off, but those that are the least well-off. There should not be a hungry kid in Dunsmere. There should not be a hungry senior in Dunsmere. And I'll simply add as a footnote, our volunteer committee that met this forum here. Well, what are the new issues of the week? And one of the new issues of the week is we're now finding hypodermic syringes around Fitzline and behind the shed of the Dunsmere Community Garden. That's an issue for me, and a true deal issue for all of us. Finally, the Brown Trout Building. These are young people, those that run the Brown Trout Building, those that run the Doohop Bakery. These are entrepreneurs coming to Dunsmere, believing the dream, believing the stories they've heard, that we were a vibrant, sustainable account, economy, and that gives me great satisfaction. It's jobs, it's revenue, and it's a sense of hope.
Thank you, Peter, the three minutes you have.
Thank you.
Couple of house cleaning things I forgot to mention. In fact, I'd like to have everybody turn off their cell phones or silence them so they don't go off in there. And then also, while everyone's fresh in mind, I would like to point out the fact that the candidates get to do this again this coming Wednesday, 6:00 PM at the library. So that's October 17, 6:00 PM at the library. Alright, so we'll alternate, who gets to answer the question first? Mario, you're graciously seated in seat number one, so you was the lucky winner. Too bad I wasn't the winning lottery ticket. So, the first question is, what do you like most about Dunsmere?
That's easy to answer. The people. The generosity of the people. Open, kind-heartedness. Even though we're one of the poorest cities in Siskiyou County, the open generosity, people here to others is overwhelming. I have been lucky enough to live in much larger cities. I have traveled all over the world, and during times of need, the people from the Dunsmere open their hearts, and as little as they have, they're ready to share with others. The natural beauty around us is another factor that can't be overlooked. We have clean water. Most of the time, we have blue open sky. We have no traffic jams, even though I dislike getting a car nowadays and even going as far as Mount Chaska. There is a peace and quietness about Dunsmere that's very easy to appreciate.
I guess sitting back, that's a very good answer. It's very hard for me to even follow that up. I, I think a couple of things that I noticed about Dunsmere as opposed to, you know, the other cities from moving here so recently, is the closeness. I agree, I think people here genuinely want to meet with each other. I think people have so many more social connections, have the wheelhouse at the La Perla and, you know, other type of eating establishments, the Cornerstone. You know, there are so many different spots that you run into people. And for example, I walked here today, and at least four people out of the five that I crossed said, "Good morning," or "Good evening." Hello. You don't find that in a lot of different places, and so making those connections are really great. I think the other thing that stands out in my mind is the access to the Sacramento River in the city is extraordinary. I think every Dunsmerian should be very proud of how connected and easy it is to walk two blocks and then walk down to the river. Most cities strive to, to make that connection, and Dunsmere is just so natural. We have this, a beautiful amenity, and then the canyon itself, you know, you look everywhere, and it's like living life in a postcard. People in San Diego, LA, dream for that view, and we just wake up every morning and that's outside our house. So I think that's the wonderful part of Dunsmere is, is the connectedness and the ability to connect with nature itself is, is really great, and that's something we should cherish and preserve as well as grow, to have more opportunities of bringing that to our residents and visitors.
I think when I encounter people who've never been to Dunsmere before, or are here for the first time, talking with them on the street, which is a fairly common occurrence down in the historic district, they're awestruck by the melding of the beautiful natural world around them, pristine untouched river, and at the same time, this beautiful vibrant little city with historical buildings, storefronts that are all approximate to a walking distance. You know, you can live in your little plot of land, not with a great deal of land, walk down to your neighbors and talk to everyone on the street. It's wonderful, and it's always, it's always impressive to them, the potential Dunsmere has. You hear that a lot, oh, Dunsmere has so much potential in the River Canyon. And I think, you know, they might be recognizing this beautiful nature and beautiful town and seeing how we could restore it to its old railroad days, but the real potential of Dunsmere is the community and the people. You know, that's the potential that will revitalize, as Peter here was talking about. That's the basis of our community and why we love to live here. It's a beautiful place to live, and we're around people who recognize that. Whether you were born here, or you've come here because you found this gem in the world, it's appreciated, and people here appreciate being here, and that's wonderful.
I hereby incorporate all three. Those were great answers, and, you know, if we're all getting to have the microphones speak, we'd all say approximately the same thing. The particular interest to me, I sort of enjoy architecture, even though my dad grew oranges in Redlands, California, and I ended up being a lawyer. Architecture fascinates me, and coming from the older cities in the United States, when I first saw Dunsmere, realized that because of the railroad and its place on this planet, the 1860s, we go back, as does much of Siskiyou County, the 1860s. And I would say, besides the wonderfulness of this community, I salute the resilience of this community. There was a destructive fire in 1903 that took out much of what was then Dunsmere. There was a destructive fire in 1920, war on Dunsmere Avenue, that could have been the end of Dunsmere. There was a catastrophic river spill, Southern Pacific, 1991, chemically sterilized the upper side, put this community on its rear end. We always used to depend on the railroad as a principal employer at what's employed 400 people in Dunsmere. That all is in our history, it's our past, and it won't be our future. Our future has to be imagined, as Councilmember Shonta and understand, by the people that come behind us, and it's vital that we figure out, how to instill the love of Dunsmere in the kids that are growing up now. Thank you.
Thank you. So for the next question, Giuliana, you get to go first. And what issues motivated you to run for council?
I think the issues that have motivated me the most come from my more technical background, kind of the more starchy stuff that most people don't want to hear me rant about for three minutes. I, I think financially, the city of Dunsmere has hit a little bit of a roadblock and, and could do a lot better. The reserves right now are not at an adequate amount that if a disaster did happen, we would be covered. We're not, and that's just a reality of things. Again, like I said, knowing my technical background, and knowing that Dunsmere has some deep-rooted technical issues, that's kind of why I wanted to step in and help. I, I've been professionally trained to help find these opportunities for financing, to look at the budgets and help out with different opportunities. Grants aren't going to save the day. It's going to help quite a bit to do that for sewer construction that we're mandated to do, to maintain our surfaces, but you know, looking at creative ways so that our residents are not burdened, as Councilmember Shonta indicated, we are a relatively disadvantaged community. I don't want to say poor, because frankly, we're, we're great in character, that doesn't make us poor. We're just a little bit under the gun. And, you know, I, that's really what has inspired me to do this, is I, I want to help out, I want to live in a community that cares so much about itself, as the city of Dunsmere already does, and to build that up and reinforce it financially.
Over the years, many individuals have served our community. You know, it's, four years is a long time, even on city council, and we've had phenomenal leaders in the past who've dealt with great difficulties. Peter enumerated a few. I hope to both continue the energy they brought to Dunsmere, and then to be open to new ideas, to help us find our future, but deal with our present issues. For instance, with water sewer situation, we're told, and my understanding, as well as I'm sure yours, is that the costs of repairing them are significant, and that rates should go up to cover those, sorry, excuse me. With the water sewer garbage situation, it's important that rates do not go up unless they're absolutely necessary. So that's an issue where we need to bring a balanced approach and a reasonable alignment. And I hope, as in other issues, to present a reasonable, educated opinion. I hope to educate myself and my fellow citizens through this process.
Four fairly quick things. The first is to preserve Dunsmere's historic district. One of my big efforts with, Councilmember Keisler, who was mayor, was to try to get the city to pay attention to the state of its historic district. And so the city hosted a joint meeting with all the members of the Planning Commission and all of the members of the city council, and he invited Ron McLeod from Dunsmere Hardware to come give his testimony. And Ron McLeod's testimony was that historic district has suffered. And I think the historic district continues to suffer. For whatever reason, the city has no co-enforcement officer on staff, and basically, if you want to let your building fall apart, your building could fall apart. That's not okay with me. I want to preserve the Upper Sacramento River. I see as custodians of this stretch of the river, the way the first people, the wind tour, the sidewalk, that we have an obligation to make sure we leave that stretch of river as good, if not better, than when we found it. I want to do more for children. I want to support Dunsmere Elementary School. I want to support Dunsmere High School with the notion, I went to a high school with a graduating class of 300. Dunsmere used to graduate in the hundreds at least as seniors, and it was less than 20 last year. What are we going to do about that? Finally, I want to do more for veterans. We have a placard that says, "Siskiyou County honors veterans. We're the first city across the Siskiyou County line, and we need to do more to parents." Thank you.
Mario, you get to answer this question. So what issues motivated you to run for office?
When I first arrived in Dunsmere and established my residency, I was out of the city limits, and I couldn't really participate in local politics, I couldn't vote, so I busyied myself with things that didn't have a boundary. I went to council meetings, it was disheartening sometimes, and I thought I had enough skills from the background to get involved. I am a troubleshooter by long history, and I thought that we could shorten some of the span of figuring out what our problems really were and how to find a solution. Unfortunately, government takes far more time than private practice. Taught me a lesson. You need to cooperate, you need to cajole, we need to, you know, take everybody's viewpoint. And it's taught me that that's a good process, but it takes time. And I believe that the fat, the last few councils have reached that goal of working together, you know, trying to find the gold. We're not always amiable during meetings, but we're amiable afterwards. We come with, you know, different points of view, and we're able to discuss them. And those were the areas that I found prior, when I would go to meetings, that was difficult.
Okay, thank you. So Matthew, you get to answer this one first. What do you feel are the qualifications to sit on the city council?
First and foremost, it's my passion for this area, the community. Secondly, I'm a very dedicated learner, both in history and I can bring a great deal of dedication in pursuing policy. In my experience at the ski park, I'm the manager there, the base manager there in the winter, I interact with a lot of people in this community, some of the most vulnerable, who are grateful for the employment, but it is harsh conditions, and I, I have greatly enjoyed leading them and solving problems with very little resources. Sometimes limited resources is just inspiration for you to reimagine how you can work with people with your current resources for a better outcome. And I look forward to applying that, which I deeply believe, and I've applied to many areas of my life, that mentality to this town.
Well, as it turned out, I went to undergraduate at Oregon State and graduated in '67, had no idea what I was going to do. Ended up going to law school in San Francisco and becoming an attorney, but never, as a blue-collar farmer guy, had an interest in going downtown and making a lot of money. What you learn is the great imbalance in our society between those who have power and those who do not have power. So I put those together, and I spent most of my career as a staff attorney, part of the time in Sacramento for the Department of Water Resources, most of the time in San Francisco for the California Public Utilities Commission, where consumers would engage in a David and Goliath battle with PG&E and Edison and AT&amp;T, and it was the job of the staff paid for by the taxpayers and ratepayers of California to level the playing field, to bring fairness to the process by which the commission, and of course, here's news everybody, the reason politicians created the Public Utilities Commission in part is no one The reason politicians created the Public Utilities Commission in part is no one wants to increase rates. It's like increasing taxes. But nonetheless, we did it as fairly as we could. It's difficult, it's arcane, but if you're a fixed-income senior citizen living in a trailer in the Mojave Desert, Edison customer, your electric bills for air conditioning could ruin you. So I bring to this job the expertise of being in the utility regulatory industry my entire career. I was honored to receive the Alexander Dunsmere Award in 2015. I was honored to receive the Planning Commission's Golden Spike Award in 2016 for my work in trying to restore Dunsmere's historic district. And I am comfortable. I spent a lot of time in the private sector. I'm used to angry citizens, some of them legitimately angry, wanting redress from their government. And that's mine with me, that's what I want to do. Fear is fear. Thank you.
So the question is, what do you feel are your qualifications to serve on the city council?
Well, I've been serving on the city council for two and a half years. I think that my record stands for itself. I have a background in finance. I started very early in my career in San Francisco in the brokerage industry. I was the very first female they ever hired. They didn't want me there either. But I accomplished the major goals. I went on to raise a family and I ran a photography business with my husband. Afterwards, I got into computers and, well, they were very logical. And computers and I got along. I became a software developer. I had traveled throughout the world as a developer and a troubleshooter. And then I was asked to help create software. And I traveled back and forth, you know, to Mexico City and I lived in Arizona at that time. I bring, I also have a degree in design. So I can combine the two applications. The biggest job or the biggest asset that I can bring and continue to bring for Dunsmere, I am on the finance committee. I think we've done a lot better on the finance committee. I have now gotten the council to look at our finances closer, that we do not have the money that everybody assumes that we have. I hope to continue in that role. I also hope to finish something I started two years ago. The city had never signed a hazard mitigation plan. I was trying to get grants from FEMA for more fuel reduction work. And we found out that Dunsmere had never signed one and it stopped us from getting anything. We are now at phase two. We have sent off the application. When I said things take time, it's taken me two years to get to that point.
As far as qualifications, I have history. I have run for office before and I succeeded. I was elected to a presidential position in the state of Wisconsin. I was in charge of a 52-person senate and I had a budget of $3.6 million, which became under budget that year and improved our reserves, which was very nice to say. I had at least eight different languages spoken between that senate. So that's, the cultural differences are something you have to navigate and understand new different types of culture and people and how they operate. And I happily lost an award to one of my colleagues who was under me in the senate, which is kind of, I guess, a really good... To me, it's flattering. I hired that person for that position and he won an outstanding leadership position at the state instead of me, which is really great to know. You know, I think it's amazing to run for office and it's amazing to be this person in the limelight. But it's always amazing to see people that you mentor or people that you build up and who end up succeeding passively. That's a really big thing for me is empowering the people around me. It shouldn't just be about me. As far as other qualifications, I have a Masters of Science in Urban and Regional Planning from the University of Iowa, Ohio City, Iowa. I obtained that degree and then here to this region to do planning and that's my background. I love it. It's very different and it's exciting work and I get to learn new things every day. As far as other qualifications, I'm a very good listener. I'm an introvert, surprisingly, so this is like terrifying to me right now. So I do like listening to people's stories and really kind of integrating that into everything that I do. I think every single person has an opportunity to tell their story and bring their perspective into the community. And I'd like to think that I'm experienced enough to listen and do that and somehow use my technical background to turn these personal things into policy and implementation measures. Other experiences, I currently work for the city of Mount Chasta in their planning department. So I work every single day outside of my free time doing planning, doing code enforcement, drafting ordinance regulation language, working on grant documentation. So I'm very familiar with that. And again, I have a pretty extensive network of different state departments that I work with, Water Resource Board, State Governor Office of Planning and Research, who are generally the granting bodies who do this work here. So I'm pretty well-connected in that sense. But I feel very capable of doing this. I feel like, although I am new, I think again, when you're a new person, you listen a lot more as opposed to, you know, being here forever and hearing the same old story. For me, everything is new. And so there's an attraction to that and learning everything that's going on around me, so.
Thank you, thank you, Giuliana. I hate to be rude in a way, but there's lots of questions you're going to want to get to. All right, so this question goes to Peter. And if elected, what two goals would you like to see achieved?
I'm going to say a plan for our future. Our, meaning our collective future, and a budget that goes with it. I am relentlessly optimistic that the best days for Dunsmere lie ahead. When I was first on the council in 2008, the council unanimously approved Dunsmere 2020. I picked a 12-year horizon. Try in 2008 to look ahead to 2020. What will we look like? Do we want fast food stores in Dunsmere? Do we want big box stores in Dunsmere? Do we want industry in Dunsmere? How will our schools be sustainable? How will our chronically underfunded budget work? And as soon as I was removed from office with the rest of the council, that was the end of Dunsmere 2020. The city never formally rescinded it, but there was an effort in 2014 to do visioning and planning. It went nowhere. There was an effort in 2017 to do visioning and planning. It went nowhere. Why? No staff, no money. So that's number one. Number two is, at Oregon State, I went to the bookstore and they gave us a calendar back in the 60s. And at the top, it said, "Plan your work, work your plan." And I will say for Dunsmere, the city of, and all of us as taxpayers and rent payers, we do not have the benefit of a plan going forward for the four enterprise funds, water, sewer, solid waste, and prop tea, even though we could go without prop tea. And we need to. We can't have enterprise borrowing. We can't ignore appreciation on trucks. We can't ignore sidewalks that are buckled. We need to scale it up. Thank you.
Instead of disagreeing with Peter, I'll just put that part of my views out. It's what two goals I hope to accomplish. I would like to finish where I started. I'd like to see the city be part of the Siskiyou County and have a hazard mitigation plan. We are one of two cities that has never signed one. With it comes FEMA money. I've already talked to the people in charge of grants. They were quite ready. They know what we guard. Everything that is important goes right through Dunsmere, the railroad, Sacramento River, I find corridors. We are in a fire zone and guarding all these precious resources. And I was stopped for the simple fact that there is no signature on a piece of paper. Last year, or the year before, we had flooding conditions. Siskiyou County was declared a federal disaster zone. The river, the courses through our city changed course in quite a few areas and it changed course bound by our sewer plant. We had to come out and pay for them ourselves because we did not receive any of these available FEMA monies. I want to finish phase three. We not only have started the plan, we've finished the plan, and then we can have the emergency task force, which I started two years ago. I had to put it aside, and decide what we're going to do during any disaster that might befall us. The other goal I have is to try to manage the crisis we're going to be facing three years financially. The state mandates more and more from all the cities in the county and doesn't give us any resources to pay for these mandates. We have an aging infrastructure. We have already started, you know, taking steps for water. Peter knows full well, he's on the task force to look at our sewer rate increases and what needs to be done. I'm not involved in that. But the city cannot just constantly spend money. It needs to put aside monies. It, as Peter said, there are disasters that will look. I am quite confident, because the two years that I have already spent on the city council, that monies are being taken care of a little bit better. We have to look at our four enterprises and see where we can cut through. Thank you.
So my two priorities are focused on youth in the community and bringing them more into the community, being more proactive with getting kids into social programs. There's been quite a bit of work with the Boys and Girls Club in Mount Chasta and I think that's something that could be easily replicated or enhanced here. Working with the Dunsmere School District to look at what their priorities are for the school district and try and complement them on the community side, making sure that our kids are doing stuff through the summer. I know, what is it, idle hands? I don't quite remember the phrase off the top of my head, but you know, when people are idle, that's when people start to get in trouble. And so I think the community can do a lot more as far as getting these kids integrated into some of our city committees. We have a very beautiful botanical garden as well as a very successful beautification committee. You know, any kid can plant a plant. And so getting them involved, you know, from step one, not only gets them to invest in our community, but then they feel like it's their community as well. So connecting that and again, connecting with the Dunsmere School District and making sure that we're all trying to meet the same goals. As far as kids in different learning situations, there are quite a few kids in this community who get vouchers to go up to Mount Chasta High School. Trying to look at why that's happening and making sure that, you know, the city of Dunsmere can maybe complement what the school district is doing to bring those kids back here down to school. My second goal is similar to Mari and Peter. It's again, going back to the financial situation with the possible rate increases, trying to find different ways of building up the community so that doesn't have to happen. One of the ways of doing that is investing in our property owners and that includes our residential property owners as well as commercial. When you increase the value of people's property, you also increase the possible assessments or taxes that can be deferred off of those without making it something that's difficult for people to deal with on a month-to-month basis. So when we're investing in ourselves, making these vacant storefronts or making buildings more attractive, having a higher property value, you build up the value of the city itself. So I'm really looking for different types of programs, Main Street programs, that we can start investing in these property owners, bring those businesses in, have them, you know, give that sales tax and do those different types of business activities as well as increasing our hotel stays. That will help increase that tax base without actually putting too much on the residential owners. And then maybe we'll get a couple of new stores out of it to get some of those different supplies that we need. Thank you.
I'd have to agree with candidate Giuliana on her, many aspects of her analysis of the situation. I think that one of my goals definitely is to get to the bottom of these four enterprises. We can't live with rates constantly being hiked up around the corner. It's hard enough as it is to make a living in Dunsmere without rates increasing higher than I do. So I would say to put together a plan where we can see what is necessary and then, to the extent possible, focus on means other than raising the rates themselves to generate funds. Doing that on a month-to-month basis, that happens very slowly. But that happens because we fix up a street, keep things cleaner, more people want to come to our town. Sustainable businesses are very difficult in this county and this town. But every new sustainable business, even if only employs one or two people, that's one or two people that are invested in the community, that help each other out, that spend money here generating sales tax, that can provide a platform where TOT taxes can be collected from. I think we need to emphasize as best we can the charm and value of our town for people coming to visit it. They can come in a respectful manner. We should see to it that they don't overrun our town. But I do think our city needs to be very hospitable in its historic district. And that'll be one key way to keep our rates lower going into the future.
Thank you. So the next question, Mari gets to go first. And what should the city council's role be in addressing public safety issues? Couple of specific examples being drug-related crimes and the fire situation that you've already addressed.
I'm not sure of the city council's role in some of these areas. The city council's role, the way that I view it, is to give advice and set policy to the city manager and what direction the city is going. How, you know, we're people of council that represent the citizens, how we send the city's resources, its money, where it goes. All of these are social issues that are important in a city's viability. But it takes a volunteer force. And Dunsmere used to have a huge volunteer force. The botanical gardens were built strictly on a volunteer form basis. The drug issue is creeping in to Dunsmere, but it's not up to the city council to deal with it other than, you know, maybe having some meetings. It is a complex issue to deal with. I don't think I have anything much more to say than that because it's, those are social issues.
I feel as though the role of city council is to similarly give advice, but I think it can be much more proactive in giving direction to city staff as well as the sheriff's office about proactive planning and proactive activities related to drug use. Again, you go back to the youth focus. I think there's a lot of things we can do with the Siskiyou School District to identify problematic patterns in kids who are having a hard time, because that's where it starts. People don't just suddenly become an addict. There's a lot of social issues that build up and then addiction is an outlet for people. So trying to recognize those signs early on in a lot of our kids in the community in a lot of our kids in the community and trying to step in and partner with social services is very crucial at that. Um, in other ways, I think Peter brings up a, if Peter brought up a really good point earlier, is he noticed hypodermic needles somewhere. How many of you have noticed hypodermic needles somewhere? Exactly. Why aren't we mapping that? Why aren't we using our residents as data collectors of saying, I saw this trash here or I saw this hypodermic needle here? It needs to be addressed and then if we map that and keep a record of that, we're able to see maybe where some high severity areas are where we either need to add additional lighting, maybe change up some of the sheriff routes to take a look at that spot. There's a lot we can do as residents that's low cost to no cost to the city to help out and address and identify those problematic areas in town. Again, similar, it goes to sidewalks as well. Everybody knows where the screwed up sidewalks are. So why don't we continue to ping those and, and try to identify where areas of priority are for investment? Um, I think that's going to be something that we can actually do as council members to direct those funds and direct that activity over and even give some of our energy to that as well. Um, and again, as far as fire, that's a very, very similar circumstance. Um, you know, we can use our residents to know, you know, I noticed a property that has a secondary vacation homeowner. They have a lot of pine needles in their yard. Maybe there's something we can do to assist them with that or have them keep that much more cleanly. Um, and I think it's similar to what Councilwoman Oshanta has been doing. You know, we need to participate in these hazard mitigation programs. We need to be very active as private property owners to hold ourselves to a safe standard. Um, and I think the city council can help direct staff or engage in finding funds in the area of education and in areas of funding to help private property owners, commercial owners, make their properties fire ready. Thank you.
It may not be the city's, um, main responsibility to handle these difficult issues, but it certainly is our community's responsibility to handle them. And while the city itself may not have direct ties to it, it is the focal point of authority within this community. And I think it's important that partners itself to enable anyone and everyone working on these programs are good to the community. Um, the city has not many resources, but a great deal many more than a private individual or beginning nonprofit. Hospitable attitude and enthusiasm for people seeking the betterment of our community, especially when it comes to our youth in these issues, would be very important. And I think to begin with, an example, as Juliana pointed out, private property, taking care of your own property and helping your neighbors take care of theirs. Helping with activities, being involved within the community. I think that anyone involved with the city on the elected level should certainly, um, conduct themselves as examples in this and work to bring as many, um, social benefits as possible to the city.
Well, I guess this is an issue where I'm going to disagree with Mari. Um, I think it is totally up to the leaders of the city to deal with public safety because if the city doesn't, who will? And I say this from the perspective of during the time I was on the council and the city had no money, we, the city council reluctantly agreed to reduce the allegation of sheriff deputy time devoted to our community by one half a position. And I would try to bring the sheriff back, whether it was Sheriff Riggins or Sheriff Lopey over the years. Did we make a mistake? Did we cut too far? Do all of us, especially the seniors and those with kids, do we feel safe? And I know Dunsmere has a history of having its own police department. Mount Chasta has its own police department. Weed has its own police department. Do we want our own police department? But I'm sort of, whether it's a building that needs to be preserved or a community that needs, once you let one broken window sit there for a while, once you let two or three hypodermic needles or, or feeties sit there for a while, you're on your way to a community we don't want to live in. As far as the fire issue, I, I, we note that Supervisor Valenzuela and his wife Barbara are in the audience. To me, climate change and dealing with the threats we face from the new normal around wildfires is going to take a coordinated response. There are monies available from the state. There's monies available from the federal government. Our needs are common. The city of Weed have burned them. And so on issues of utility lines that start fires, on issues of defensive barriers, on issues of using CDF people and the correctional people to do our sneaky tricking, there's a lot that could be done together. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So the next question was asked by Juliana is how would you improve the availability of affordable housing in Dunsmere?
That's a wonderful, difficult issue. I, I think a, a big step to take is take a look at our dilapidated housing that we already have. There's a lot of properties throughout Dunsmere that aren't being taken care of that are in residential zoning and used to have residential units in them. Um, looking at those properties, seeing what happened, working with the property owners to bring those units back into compliance is probably the easiest solution to that and probably the most sustainable. Um, I think the other things we need to take a look at is what else is, is attributing to the housing crisis? Uh, one of the things related to wildfire that's going to become a bigger issue as we continue to go on and don't address the risk around us is insurance. Um, if you haven't had your insurance go up, it's probably going to go up this year. Um, and if you haven't tried to reinsure yourself, most of you will not be able to be reinsured. The statistics now is that in Siskiyou County, eighty-two percent of individuals will not be able to be re-insured with their current insurance agency. That is a huge issue. It's a statewide issue. It's not something that we as a city council can, can start to address. But there are certain things we, again, can help support property owners with educational systems, work with our Fire Safety Council and other nonprofit disaster-related ordinances to improve our properties. Um, and, and that'll hopefully help with that. Again, your insurance company is going to give you a list and the city could possibly help with training programs, assistance programs. You know, a lot of people in this area are aging and may not be able to get on their roof and sweep off that metal roof, nor is that safe. Please don't do that. Um, and you know, maybe there are younger individuals at the high school. Maybe there are people in different, uh, safety and volunteer organizations that we can get together and every fall and spring, go to different properties that need more assistance and help out. Um, again, it's about being good neighbors in this instance. Um, that's not going to solve our housing crisis at all. There are a lot of intricate things happening at the state level, state building code, if you've tried to build anything. I just upgraded my electrical for a couple thousand dollars. It's, it's not going to be an easy thing for us to do, but I think there's incremental changes that we can do to, to bring in non-conforming housing into performance. Um, there are things we can do to help improve our, our current property stock and before investing in those bigger projects of, of low income and moderate income. I think that's the other big thing you'll see is moderate income, those who are paying anywhere from four hundred to eight hundred dollars, which is, you know, a decent home income if they're not finding units as well. So we need to start looking at that market as opposed to building fancy condos or what will us for, for the upper class citizens.
Hey, Ruth, Juliana, to begin with, bringing all housing units that we have in Dunsmere that are disrepair is a very important issue and I do respect private property, but there are cases such as the house just below my first house here in Dunsmere that has blackberries and trees growing through the floor and through the roof and out the window. Um, that house is a fire danger and it's depleted the source of portable housing in Dunsmere. Um, that being said, even with all the houses currently built in Dunsmere, we're under capacity for every level of housing. And the city council, although it is difficult, will have to do what it can to see how private investment and various programs are available for building. We do need to build new housing units because there are just as, way too many people trying to, um, I'm a realtor here, so I see it all the time. Um, people want to own their own home increasingly, they can't just because there isn't availability. Sometimes people can afford a home, but they can't even find a home at that particular time and have to wait for one to become available. And, um, in many cases, they even go to a different area because of the high costs of our housing due to lack of supply or from lack of patience. They get tired of waiting and move on to another town.
Well, not shockingly, I agree with Juliana and I agree with Matthew. And I would say, one of my personal goals in the first 12 months where I did get elected is to sit down with the owner or owners of the House of Glass, to sit down with the owner or the owners of the Travelers Hotel, to sit down with the owner or owners of the old Castle Rock Mottos and say, what can we do? To the point that our mayor, you know, did an article about affordable housing and the answer is we haven't added a single unit and we can't. I disagree with that. My personal dream for the, um, Travelers Hotel is to work with Sheriff Lopey and the veterans' organizations in Siskiyou County and turn the Travelers Hotel into supportive veteran, supportive veteran housing with federal dollars and state dollars and Siskiyou dollars. Robert Kennedy said, only those who are willing to fail spectacularly will ever achieve anything spectacularly. I think we can do this. Thank you.
Could you repeat the question because I think we've gone off.
So what would you do to improve the availability of affordable housing in Dunsmere?
Um, Mr. Jones, Pearlock and I read an article about a year ago and we realized that we faced the same problem as a lot of mountain towns, you know, destination vacation areas. Then housing gets snapped up more and more by wealthier individuals from out of town and get turned into vacation vehicles, short-term vacation vehicles. So we sent our concerns over to the planning commission that we are concerned about the number of houses. You know, more and more Airbnbs are appearing, more and more people, you know, half of our, um, half of our walk bills go out of the area. We have a lot of second homes here. And I noticed myself in the area where I live, more and more houses are getting turned into Airbnbs, which depletes the available long-term housing in the area. Um, I think it's a concern Mount Chasta was able to pass an ordinance that only certain areas could have and limit the amount of Airbnbs. Um, I still am concerned with that. I just noticed one more house in my area that is now going in that direction. Every house that is taken off the market for short-term rental decreases the amount of available long-term housing. We don't have a lot of room to build new. We are constrained by legal issues of mandating an owner and what they can do with their house, their property. Um, these are issues almost in the league of California cities. Um, I listened to much larger cities. These are not just small city issues. Larger cities face the same issues when they, when they have destination. Coastal cities have the same problem. And we compound our problem because we do not have land to be able to expand to. The, everybody's familiar with the House of Glass that has been rezoned to be a multifamily, um, area. Finding a developer who will come and invest in Dunsmere to do that is not an easy proposition. Um, I think that the city has done an adequate job, not a fantastic job. When you're concentrating on just keeping the city afloat, um, it's hard to devote resources other than that. But I think that there's so much potential there and everything is, you know, that has been said, I agree to. But it's not something that the city can force others to do. Thank you.
All right. So the next question, um, I think Matthew starts this one. And on controversial items, how would you reach a decision?
On controversial items, I would deeply consider all aspects and most importantly, I would reach out to the citizens of Dunsmere. Um, already in considering policy with running for city council, um, I've learned an enormous amount about what the citizens of Dunsmere care about. And there are a lot of differences when it comes to the details, but I, I have found, and it's been very encouraging to note, that we share a great deal of common hopes and concerns for our community, as we should. And my goal would always be to harness those common hopes and concerns in deliberating on difficult issues. Thank you.
Well, I have a few minutes before this session started to walk around the high school because all of us went to high school. We all have our own memories. But it's an inspirational time for maturing young people. And here is one of the places, besides church and family, we learn our values. And I look at the values over on this wall and there is respect, rule number one. Responsibility, number two. Citizenship, number three. Fairness, number four. If we put those in the city council chamber, whether it's a citizen having their three minutes of fame at the podium or some of the interchange that goes on between council members, some of it over the past few years has been embarrassing. And it helps explain why there's plenty of seats any given night for a city council meeting, very, very few people come. We need to figure out how to engage the community as a city government in making collective decisions. We have to get rid of the anger. We have to get rid of the personalization and we have to put issues like housing that excite people on the agenda. Thank you.
How do I, what a, what a board. Um, there's all the holes of conflict. This is a nice local town. People that you know, what they care about. I personally go and investigate when we have an issue that comes up prior. Um, it's to have people really feel because I feel I represent everyone in Dunsmere on an equal basis. And to try to have a level playing field is difficult. I was on the cannabis task force. I already knew that it was going to be a contentious subject. And it's amazing that nine disparate, you know, totally different people managed to reach the conclusions or the concessions that we made. We actually have the product. Um, but my role in that is I held some beliefs, but my beliefs don't necessarily, you know, are held by everyone in the city. So I made a list for myself of disparate, you know, different, different socioeconomic, different genders, different, you know, age groups, um, and questioned them on their thoughts and didn't just hold on to my own. Um, and I think I did a pretty good job of, um, holding everybody's values, you know, to, you know, to finish a product. During council meetings, we usually know what the subject is going to be. We get an agenda. We are tasked to read what is in the agenda package. Um, our meetings are not that contentious. Our, um, well, everyone seems to prepare. We get While everyone seems to prepare, we get into a few minutes of maybe heated dialogue in between us, but it's not the rancor that I hear used to exist. When you have different opinions in a local society, you're going to have that. The lack of audience participation in our council meetings, I cannot believe that someone would hold the council members responsible for it. Everyone, I used to place in social agenda, all the agendas, what was going on, it didn't produce any results. We notify, city manager and city staff manages, puts in paper, every meeting, it still produces something and you have to be willing to participate in local government.
I think it's going to depend on what you define conflict as, as far as how to deal with it. I think I'll have to be very strong and say I disagree with Councilwoman Shanta in that you have to be willing to participate. I think it's very difficult to participate nowadays as someone who is one of the next bigger voting generations. As a millennial, I work 60 hours a week. I have other responsibilities that make it very, very difficult sometimes to participate like other generations have been able to. And even when looking at kids in the high school, the Generation Z is going to be even more difficult to communicate with their digital natives. They're pretty much on their screen the whole time, so how do you get their attention? And I think there is an ability to deal with conflict in a way that's constructive. I think disagreements build better policy. I always try to explain things, there's a spectrum. You don't have to have it one way or another. There are solutions that are in the middle that we can work to. It does take more time. I do agree with Councilwoman Shanta on that one, that government takes a little bit longer, but I think that's a good thing. We're trying to balance a lot of different types of people here, a lot of different types of backgrounds, expectations, hope streams, but there is an ability to get to consensus. And I think it's the city council members' purview to develop different types of engagement methods. Streaming has been amazing, being able to stream meetings. The number of people who I've talked to who are like, yeah, I put it on after work while I'm making dinner and I watch every single meeting and I'm very concerned. I think there is definitely a way that we can get together with everyone and start to talk about how we deliver this information to people, how we're talking about different issues and that, one of the things I tell the planning commissioners, because I am their major staff liaison in Manchester, you don't have to make a decision tonight. I think there's a lot of pressure on city council members to make a decision right now. You need to decide. You don't. You have an entire population of people's hopes and dreams on the line. You have time to make a good decision. And if you don't have all of the information that you need to make that decision, it's okay to say that you need that and it's okay to say you don't know what you want to do right now. So I think as council members, we can be better at communicating to our constituents. We can be better at finding different ways of participation. We can be better at making educated decisions to reduce the amount of conflict and change that conflict into really constructive policy. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Peter, you're up first on this. Couple of water questions. First one, the city's water pipes are in poor condition. Can you tell us how you will guarantee that our water improvement funds will not disappear and be used appropriately to fix our water infrastructure?
If the question is what is the role of the city council? The role of the city council is to set policy. Does the city of Dunsborough now have a policy that says if the general fund is short for whatever reason, we could borrow from a water enterprise fund, a sewer enterprise fund, a solid waste enterprise fund, Proposition P? As I get it, the city and its staff feels comfortable borrowing money from these dedicated funds to keep the city up. I don't support that policy. Every dollar that I pay for water service, I want to go for water service. Every dollar I pay for sewer service, I want to go for sewer service. I don't want to be overcharged. I want to pay my fair share. I mostly want a transparent system where I'm able to see what other people are paying by class, business versus residential, big user, little user. But yes, the pipes have to be fixed. We have millions of dollars to go. We've come a long ways, but I go back to Pace has a master plan for our water system. Any of you can go to City Hall and look at it. Ditto for our sewer system. If you educate yourself, you realize we've come a ways, we've got a ways to go, and I want the integrity of these efforts to fix the leaky water pipes to be preserved. And I want to communicate to everybody that's paying the freight. We've come this far. We have this far to go. And most importantly, we care about people on fixed income that aren't going to be able to absorb the magnitude of the water rates we're talking about. Thank you.
Water rates. We had a water rate increase. It was a task force. It passed. Citizens know that the water system has kept being passed forward and passed forward until we've reached the point of downtime. Some of the pipes are 100 years old. We have water rates set. We have to meet some designated goals to be able to be eligible for funds. We are meeting those goals. As far, the secondary part of the question is what I really would like to answer to, because it hasn't been really addressed.
So the city's water pipes are in poor condition. Can you tell us how you will guarantee that our water improvement funds will not disappear and be used appropriately to fix our water infrastructure?
That's already happened in the last two years. We have a city manager that quite believes, and I am on the finance committee and I push for that, more transparency every year. The transparency has been there. We do not shift monies around. The water rates have an improvement fund attached to it. And that's the rate increases. They're designated only for the water enterprise. The sewer fund has two different funds, one for improvements and one for general operation. For accounting purposes, it's the same. For an auditor, it's the same. For me, it's not the same. I had to fight to make sure that we didn't transfer from one fund to cover our operating cost because then there was no paper trail. Mr. Rick Chan sitting in the audience was involved during that rate study and remembers the two funds being separate. I would not let a discussion pass that unless we had, unfortunately or unfortunately with your point of view, I had a swing vote and I did not let it pass, that the monies cannot be transferred unless there was an obligation to pay back the fund that it was coming from. So these may have happened a long time ago, but they're now continuing to happen. The only fund or enterprise where we do a year at the county is the airport. It has not been able to run solvent for many, many years. Hopefully, I can address that issue at once.
So as far as the water service, it's always the city's first priority to provide clean, safe water for all of the residents. So I think we start from there, looking at what the real issues are, taking a look at aging pipes, which ones are older than others. Obviously, removing lead-based pipes is priority as a human health hazard and seeking those out. My discussions with the city manager and understanding it is that our mapping services are not very adequate right now. So working with him to use water funding to pay for either technical assistance or going for grants to provide that technical assistance to get better mapping, again, similar to the drug use issue, if we map the system and understand where the huge problem areas are, that's where we can prioritize those funds. So I think working with a small budget, that's what you got to do, is you got to get the most for that single dollar that you're using. And we want to be upgrading parts of the system that are in the most dire straits as it comes to conditions. As far as using funding from those water funds for other purposes, I don't agree with that. I think if there's an individual at the city or if there's a purchase made related to the water fund, then yes, that should pay for that. But if it's something to do with sewer, the water fund should not be paying for that. If it's sewer-related, it has to come from the sewer enterprise funds. My opinion differs once we get to the general fund, even though it is very small. The general fund is something that the city council has the purview to delegate to different uses that are a priority. And I think that's the fund we should look at first before we start appropriating funds from those enterprise accounts. I just don't think that that's a viable way of moving forward, but we do have such dire infrastructure issues. Thank you.
The services of water, sewer, and to some extent solid waste are very essential for a town. It is, to be remembered, more effective that we pool together and work on them separately as opposed to having a separate little system. And each fund should support itself and nothing more and should not be taken from. So thanks to the second part, I am firmly of the belief that water rates should pay for the water, sewers should pay for the sewer, and solid waste should pay for the solid waste. If one is taking in a surplus and the other one is in a deficit and it all works out evenly in the end, well, let's adjust those rates so that the name reflects the reality, if indeed that is the reality. I understand reserve should also be met within that. And we do have the difficult task of upgrading and neglecting the water system. My understanding is we've made great progress on that, but the city manager shared with me that we are not close to being at the point where we're proactive and not reactive when it comes to the water. What I would love for is to know how much, how many years, what rate increase, till we are at that point where we're not just reacting to something going bad, to a state inspection coming in and finding us. Where can we get to the point where it might be years out, we need to accept that. This was years in the making. It may take us years to climb out of that, but where, when can we reach that point and what rate increases are involved to get to the point where we're at the break-even, where we can be proactive and go out and solve things before they become very expensive problems?
Thank you. So Laura, you're up first on the next question. If you get on the city council, you return to the city council, would you see if you could restore the five units of water that was removed during the last rate study?
Unfortunately, I wish I could. I have a garden. But the rate study was done. The Proposition 18 passed. We have a five-year plan and I wish I could return that, but we can't. Otherwise, we don't meet our goals. I use more water in the summer. I have to be more careful. And I lived a very long time in Arizona where it's punitive. Here, it just charged you for what you use and it's not punitive in nature.
Similar to Councilwoman Shanta's response, so how the 218 process works is once you approve that rate study, that's the rate you have to go with to amend those or change those, you would have to do another subsequent 218 study. Now, if that's the purview of the residents of the city of Dunsborough, I think that's something the city should survey and poll and see if that is a continuing issue. Change is hard when it comes to these things sometimes. And again, I also have a large garden and yard, so it can be a little bit costly, but I think that's something some of us have to adjust to. In agreement with that is I think there are ways of partnering with other state agencies to offer water conservation programs, looking at different programs for people to save on those and kind of learn some of the new techniques for saving water so that we can absorb that a little bit better in our budgets.
Well, as you all know, we're home to the best water on earth. So intuitively, it's frustrating to be charged a great deal for the use of that lovely water, especially when it flows down in and underneath our yards and houses, sometimes inconveniently. That being said, I think a lot of this relates to the many decades of our water system lapsing from current standards. And we need to get to a point where we could perhaps develop programs to lessen the economic hardship on people who can't afford to pay for water and they live in the home of the best water on earth.
I think I would only add to the previous responses that in most of California, clean potable water in a municipal setting is a huge premium, very uniquely blessed with the gravity system and spring pure water. So the rest of California is engaging in something called water conservation. That should be an element of our wins. That is, if your style of watering your garden is to put six hoses out there and flood your lawn, you'll get reworked for that on your water bill. If you put in drip irrigation, water efficiency, and use much less of the product and the pipes, you might get a incentive. So this plays into, again, my concern about low-income, fixed-income residents of our town. If we willingly reduce the amount of units and increase the cost, at some point, we're going to be missing the mission. We need to engage with the citizens on what works for them and craft a water policy that does punish the least overall.
Thank you. So Juliana, you're first. Councilwoman Shanta mentioned the fact that the airport has been losing money for years. So how can the city council help enhance opportunities at the Dunsborough Airport to make it pay for itself or even generate some income for the city?
Sure. So talking with Mayor Bruce Doig and a couple of other people familiar with the airport committee, I believe that the city has been moving in a good direction as far as looking at what the planning options are for out in that airport area. I believe previously people had talked about putting housing there. I don't advise that. I don't think most of us like airplane noise, even if we do have a smaller airport that's primarily used for drone operations. But I think there's an opportunity to take a look at the infrastructure and work with federal and state agencies. There's a lot of economic development around small towns in areas like this. We do have to start composting at all of our restaurants in the next couple of years. It's a state mandate. And maybe there's an opportunity to put in a green waste production facility up there that would create jobs as well as leave the needs of composting. The composting would be much farther away from town and you would have to worry about the smell or odor or anything like that. I think there's a lot of opportunity for different types of uses. That wouldn't be a huge burden on the water or sewer system because my understanding is there's not adequate service up there. So I think there's a lot of things we can do to be creative. And going back to similar things that Peter had said, we have to listen to what the needs of the residents are. Maybe there are some needs, like I said, composting programs. I know a lot of people have talked about solid waste issues, taking things to the dump and being very expensive. Maybe there's some opportunities. The Siskiyou County Economic Development Council offers incentives to businesses that recycle different types of materials in the area. Maybe there's an ability to work with them and attract an industry to do that. There's a lot of opportunity, I think we have. I think we just need to be a little bit more proactive. But that being said, I think the airport committee has been moving in that direction and I think we should continue that movement together. in that direction and I think we should continue that movement together.
I think that the situation running the airport at a loss really needs to be addressed. I think that any and all options for reconfiguring, reimagining this asset for the city should be on the table, because Dunsmere can't afford to lose money carrying something that's not productive for its citizens or itself. And I really think that the role of the city council in answer to the second part of the question, is to encourage anyone who has any interest in the industry or private developer with that to really take them seriously and support them in their evaluation of what they could possibly do. I think we need to reimagine it, it could still be an airport, but I think anything should be on the table in terms of avoiding this year after year loss.
Well, anybody that owns an airplane in the audience, raise your hand, that's sitting out at Dunsmere Airport. When Mario, Reina, and I were on the city council, we basically took Matthew's position, which is, we are coming back on public safety, we can't afford a half a share of deputy, and we have money available to put into the Dunsmere Airport. No, we don't, we stopped it. And so there it sits, Mario's regurgitating with hours and stories about the genesis of the airport, the FAA grants, the terrible leases that were executed, so most of the hangars have storage instead of airplanes in them, the ridiculously low long-term leases. Is there a mechanic to fix an airplane out there? No. Is there fuel service out there? No. Is there anything, snack bars, anything? No. So, I can't see far enough to where the airport, like Vale, Colorado, have wealthy people flying in, spend the weekend in Dunsmere. Others may be able to see it, but for now, I'm with the, let's put our heads together and try Plan V, but no spending general fund dollars until we do.
See, Mr. Art, we can come to agreements. It has been a sticky subject for me. You know, Dunsmere has had the habit, or not Dunsmere, Dunsmere has been the beneficiary of all these gifts that the county has bestowed upon us. Unwanted properties, things that weren't profitable, we sit on one of them. I would love to have an asset in a small airport that functions as long as it can pay the bills. Unfortunately, as Mr. Art has mentioned, is no one in Dunsmere benefits from it. It all benefits people from wealthier communities than ours. I think that we now started around, I am hopeful that we can have some private, you know, companies come in in the surrounding areas, but that does not immediately, you know, for the next few years, solve the problem that it brings of the deficit. I think we need to look at every single cost associated with it and see where we can cut.
Okay, thank you. So I think we're back to Matthew, and what kind of guidance should the city council give the city manager regarding goals and priorities for the city?
I think the role of the city council is to be the connecting point between all of its citizens, all the citizens of Dunsmere. You know, we come from different backgrounds, some of us are new here, others are born here, we all care deeply, even on the candidate table here, but the city council as well, Doig and Dave Kaiser are here as well, that they're part of the community. I see them walking around, I see them at the grocery store and brewery, and they're interacting, and so are we with all the citizens of Dunsmere. And the city manager has a very difficult job at best, he has so many things to accomplish, some of them far out, some of them very immediate and pressing, and he needs as clear directions as possible. So his job is not to necessarily go out in the city and figure out what people want to have done or not have done, that is the role of the city council, and they should be as clear as possible in their private meetings with him and in the council meetings, what the people are looking for and what they expect.
Plan your work, work your plan. Does the city of Dunsmere have a plan that it holds its city manager accountable for? No. When I was on the city council and having worked in government for a long time, your pay was personally the city manager or the revenue office, a lot of money. They're very good at doing what they are supposed to do, but if you don't tell them what they're supposed to do, then they're left wandering around the streets, or maybe they get along better with council member X or council member Y as the cloud. The city council, starting in January, needs to adopt a plan for the next two years, three years, five years, and in that plan will be priorities, infrastructure, economic development, public safety, et cetera. They need to pin the priorities in each of those areas, say, fire, and they leave the whole city manager accountable for the goals that the city council has set. And I don't see that currently. The city manager that we retained when I was on the council was immediately let go after the recall, but I have in my file his performance expectations quarter by quarter, and all five of us were close session to read on and had a good discussion about with him. Thank you.
What kind of guidance should the city council give the city manager regarding goals and priorities for the city?
I think with our new city manager, he has actually been proactive in this. We've had town halls to try to set priorities. But again, it's so much easier to do all of that when you're not constantly worrying about how you're going to pay for it. We are sitting with declining resources and just trying to manage the enterprises, all of the financial commitments the city is bound to, takes up most of the resources. It would be great if we had the resources of Mount Chaska, if we had the resources of weed, who's now getting yet another, you know, major gas station there. We have set priorities, but we're also realistic. First, we need to go through what is already obligated, what is left indisposable, what other crises are coming up that need to be accounted for. As I said, the next three years are going to be critical for this city.
I think the role of city council is to really channel the hope of the community, and then the city staff is the reality of the situation. So I think that relationship between the city council and city staff is translating, okay, what do we hope for the future, what do we hope is going to happen, and what is the reality of our situation and what do we have to do to get there? You know, we talked about the financial situation, we did just hire a new financial director, who's wonderful, and I think Mark is doing really well in his position with what he has been given for that position. I think the first and foremost thing is, city council needs to listen to the city manager about what's going on in the day-to-day, because I think that's a good indicator of some of the priority areas that we need to focus on. We need to remember that those people are doing this day in and day out, they're getting paid forty hours a week to think about those problems, notice them, recommend some changes, and I think city council needs to listen to that sometimes. On the other side, again, translating that hope, me as city council members need to, one, work together to translate something that we all agree on, or at least a majority of three agree on, but I think there is definitely a way that we can work together to get through the next couple of years and deal with the financial situation. Again, I think the city council needs to take a stance on what the future goals are and not change those goals. We have a joke about council members becoming bagpies and fighting the next shiny thing and then going, oh, maybe we should switch out this goal for that one, when in reality our city staff have been working very hard on those goals that were originally set. Peter brings up a good point of looking at a plan for five to ten years, but California mandates that every city has a general plan, which usually has a planning horizon of twenty years, and I'm, you know, being a planner, I have to say, maybe we shouldn't plan for the plan and then plan some more. We do have to do some actions sometimes. So I think relying on our planning commission as well, and remembering it's not just city staff, we have city committees that can help with recommendations to city council. And I think planning commission is really a good way to start empowering that group to really look at that general plan, look at some planning priorities for that future horizon, and listen to them as city council members, as well as listening to the general public about things that come up from day to day. Thank you.
Thank you. So Peter, you're first up on the next question, and that is, how do you promote communication and good relationships among the council members and the community so the city can progress and not be torn apart?
Well, all of us online have been on teams in one setting or another. There's teams that play well together and do well, there's teams that can't get along with each other and accomplish really little. When I was on the council, it was extremely collegial, and we all felt we accomplished a great deal in getting to fix pipes, water pipes and sewer pipes. I am used to conflict as an attorney. My criticism of the status quo is, if you look at a city council agenda, there is a list of committees to the left, number of them, and the committees that are already in. So, one of the best ways to get along with your colleagues is committee work, including citizens. I also grew up in an area of San Bernardino County where the practice of the city council where I grew up, Redlands, was coffee with the council members. So three of us can't meet together, but two of us can. So if you could come in on a weekly or bi-weekly basis to Gary's Pizza Bar, we'll buy the coffee, just come and sit down and talk to us, not the three minutes of fame at the podium with a gavel and a clock, just talk to us about what you feel safe, you worried about your people. I think that shows trust, that shows an interest in listening rather than just talking. And my third thing is, I want to involve the students in this high school. Again, when I was growing up, we had a shadow program, maybe some of you did as well, where for a day, you're the fire chief, you're the police chief, you're the mayor, and you spend a month shadowing the positions, learning about the challenges of your community, learning about all the stuff we were talking about, and applying the values that are up on the wall. I'm too old for social media, I confess it, so I give that to the younger candidates, but I do like face-to-face engagement and think we owe it to our community.
I think there's been a major improvement at last, two and a half, three years on the city council. I personally feel like I have no conflicts with my council members. We are religious. I have an open relationship with people in the city, they know how to reach me and they frequently do. I do use social media, though I use it to transmit information. I don't rely on it completely, and I get phone calls, I get email. The citizens in this town do let me know how they feel. I also am involved in volunteer activities that are outside of the city council. I am being told the mayor too is to, you know, what the citizens want, so I'm not sure that I'm able to understand the question and answer it in a way, because I don't feel that I personally don't have, or the people in this city don't have access to me.
So, back to the question, I believe it was talked about between city council members?
How do you promote communication and good relationship among the council members and the community so our city can progress and not be torn apart?
Thank you. I think at the end, we need to remember why we're here, which is to serve our community that we all care about, and I think conflict and arguments occur, whether someone brings in a bias or not, I think those, when we, you know, take a step back and see what we're trying to do here, I think there's an ability for people to meet in middle ground or to establish a policy that works with those concerns in mind. I think as far as reaching the community, again, as I stated before, you know, it's becoming more and more difficult to connect city governments with different generations. Like I said, Gen X, millennials and Gen Z, Gen Z, senior kids in high school, actually I just heard it starts in like nineteen ninety-five, so I guess they're not in high school anymore, which is weird. But I think the big thing is taking a look at their work schedules. We can't go to meetings nearly as much as previous generations, a lot of people are working two jobs, they're working a job and then taking care of their family, we have a higher prevalence of single-family homes in Dunsmere than other communities. I think we need to start getting creative with how we reach out, providing childcare or a childcare option when we have important meetings or when we have workshops, making sure they're not held during the day or early in the morning when most of the people can't be able to do that because they're going to work. Making sure our city committees also follow that as well. If someone wants to participate, you know, it has to be done in a way that makes sense to their schedules. I think reaching out to the community and seeing how they want to relate. I think the use of social media as a communication tool is very, very smart for the city, but I think there's a lot more that we can do with online forums, a way to do 24/7 access to discussion posts, and as I said before, you know, we shouldn't be afraid of doing things on the weekend. Meetings don't have to be meetings, you can totally partner with other organizations to do something fun. If Siskiyou, the Siskiyou Art Museum downtown, if that's having an event, why not post something for the city about how do you feel about public art in the city? I mean, there are ways to make these things relevant and try and go where the people are, as opposed to asking them to come to certain things like this, so late evening after working a full eight-hour day.
As mentioned earlier, sometimes conflict can be constructive, it can help form a policy that's going to work and be more resilient for all, more people for a greater time. So, conflict within city councillors isn't necessarily a bad thing in and of itself, as long as we approach it, and this is how I would not tear our city apart with division, would be to understand that when disagreements arise, they're because we have different ideas about things. It's not personal, it's not disagreeing with the person's commitment or passion or love for their community. You know, someone wrote to me, I'm sure they knew this process, I know it's a cliche, but if you get elected, remember you're going to be representing all the people that voted for you, all the people who didn't vote for you, and all the people who didn't even vote at all. I think that that's impressed upon every council member, and that basis that we all share will guide us in getting along and not dividing the city.
Thank you. So now we're back to councillor Mario Shanta, and how would you promote a successful downtown revitalization?
I'm unsure that I can answer that. This is something that's been struggled for a long time. These are lots of, you know, private businesses, I wish the chamber would get more involved with the businesses. I wish the chamber would get more involved with the businesses. I promote on my own, you know, and representing, you know, as a council member, you know, any events that take place. But I don't know if the question is being asked properly as to how do the city council, you know, help revitalize? Maybe as individuals, how do we support, you know, the local businesses so that they thrive? How do we support their members? I know I have made a decision since it's been so hard for them this summer that even though it may cost me a little bit more money, it may be not convenient, I'll support the local businesses before I support out the local area. I think everyone has to take a personal stance as to how much revitalization actually goes on downtown.
I think there's a couple of things that we can do to work for or revitalize downtown. And Peter kind of mentioned a little bit in some of his other responses about the brown child building, that's a really good example. We have some really great businesses that have just started. Free, Wheelhouse, Expanding, Pusher. I think the first off, talking to those businesses would be great. They're obviously succeeding, so we can ask them what went well, what could we do better as a city? What are some things that you plan to do for the future? And I think we can build off of that. And that's pretty low cost and just a conversation, really. And I think we can use that as a model to maybe approach these vacant property owners. I think vacant properties just make the community feel drained. And so I think focusing on those vacant properties and seeing, you know, why are they vacant? What's the issues that are happening here? Here's what we've heard from successful businesses. How can the city work with the chamber, work with Ciscu Economic Development Council, to fill those? I have worked previously with an economic development firm in the state of Wisconsin with a ten-county area that was primarily rural, addressing the same issue about what we can do with downtown businesses. And there's really inexpensive and effective ways of dealing with that. One of the ways is also making what are called shadow boxes, which are just filling the stores' windows with products of individuals who make their own products at home. So instead of paying for that retail, that whole retail space, they get like a very small section just to advertise, you know, if you make these wax candles. There's a wonderful woman who has a honey stand up by the Cedar Lodge. And, you know, maybe there's an opportunity for her to make a shadow box and put some of her products there and expand that market. Maybe have some tourists see it there that don't come to Mount Dunsborough. I think there's an ability for us to look at some ineffective things that have been done in other cities that we could replicate and still meet the needs of revitalizing the town in a way that we really like. And again, I think we can do that in partnership with our chamber. You know, the more businesses that the chamber sees, the chamber has the ability of getting more investment and then they're able to do more. So working with them is going to be crucial on this one. But I think the simplest thing we can do is reach out to our businesses that are succeeding, as well as reaching out to those who are struggling and try and address those issues.
Full revitalization of our historic district is quite a puzzle. It's very difficult in this world for a single business to be successful for many years and sustainable. And that's what we need is sustainable businesses. And it's scary. I've known people who've started businesses and failed and moved on and started another business. Others succeeded the first time. But that jumping off point of taking the risk and starting a business is personal and relies on the private party. However, it really is up to the city council and prominent citizens of Dunsmere and any citizen to encourage people considering that risk of the advantages and support that their community will give, from the city to the councillors, down to the last citizen. I think it's very important because each new business makes it more likely that another business can come and thrive. And generally speaking, this is a very important process for us over the next decade. The world is moving towards a service-based economy, particularly in the U.S. And with California business laws, manufacturing, while light manufactured could be very interesting, we do need to look to self-sustaining communities where we provide other services for one another on the local circuit. We need internet that's good in this town. We've made great progress in that in the last decade, and we need to make further progress because we need to make it available. You can live in Dunsmere because you choose to. It's a beautiful place to be and that you can support yourself through any means creatively. So I'm all for revitalization and what I think the role of the city council is primarily encouragement. If someone calls you, call them back. Reassure them that you are dedicated to helping them figure out a way, not because it's necessarily the role of a city councillor, but because you're dedicated to the community and you will see what resources that can legally be given, are given to support the revitalization of our charming community.
Well, it won't be a surprise to any of the city council members in the audience that I want to preserve the historic district and agree with Ron MacLeod's testimony that the historic district has suffered without co-investment from the city. The city has no interest in supporting those who fix their buildings and requiring correction from those who let their buildings go to pieces. I walk downtown Dunsmere every day. I go by the Cornerstone Restaurant. The curb in front of the Cornerstone Restaurant is almost in the gutter. There's a stump tree in the sidewalk that's heated up the entire sidewalk. Liability for everybody trying to go into the restaurant. Liability for the city. Looks ugly. So the city does have a role in fixing the infrastructure. The city does have a role because we are poor in the world. We have access to low-cost loans. We have access to community development block plans. And we can actually... Trust me, the small businesses in Dunsmere are going to succeed. They've all hung Jedi. They are as committed as all the rest of us. So the Tobleroi Bakery received a forty thousand dollar loan from the city of Dunsmere to purchase the last batch of mixers and hoods and so on. That's part of the revolving loan program that sat dead for a hundred years. That's an example of what we can do. So I think Mr. Dinjess and the Chamber, they've done admirably. But ten years ago, it was mostly empty storefronts. Now it's mine. Watch this community go if the city will support it.
Right, thank you. So we're back to Juliana. And if you're successful in your candidacy for council, how will you separate yourself from city projects and include your business and properties?
Very good question. That's usually what people have asked me when I said that I was running, is how I'm going to separate myself from the City of Mount Chasta. That's, for me, a very easy thing to do. The city of Dunsmere is my home, and I care a lot about it. And I want to be able to serve this community and set direction to make things better. I don't have that ability, nor do I want that ability in my current job at the City of Mount Chasta. I really see this as an opportunity to bring people of my age group back, people who are interested in starting families. I want to be able to provide assistance to the Dunsmere High School, that school board. You know, I do have a very close friend on that. Talking about the difficulties they have, you know, that's something I want to help address. And my desire, my passion is here in Dunsmere, and that's not going to waver. Regardless if I get elected or not, I think that's something to point out is, even if I'm not, I'm going to continue to look out for my home. I've already been working with the city manager on a number of different programs that are not related to my position with the City of Mount Chasta. And I think honestly, my position gives me an ability to offer a network of professionals and financial institutions that possibly couldn't be offered if I wasn't here in this community. You know, I'm going to continue to look out after my home, and I hope to serve this community regardless of what job I'm in.
There are two general categories. Because like most people here in Ciskiyou County, I have to do a few things to make the puzzle pieces fit together. In the wintertime, I'm the base manager of the ski park. And it won't be at all difficult to separate professional from my role as city councillor, wanting to be elected. For one thing, I get to facilitate the employment part-time that season for about fifty to one-hundred-and-fifty people and influence on how they're hired. And I meet people every day and tell them to put in an application. You know, you don't have a job, you can have one there in case the season passed, et cetera. And that's part of community development in that we get to have a ski park. You know, you get to take part in giving people a reason to come to this area. Dunsmere hotels fill up on a busy weekend with ski parks, and that gives me no little joy. So that would be very complimentary. The other professional endeavor of mine is I'm a realtor. And one of the things that brought me to real estate is ways in which you can really assist in community development. And part of that is just, like, I meet someone, I've met people, and they didn't know that they could qualify to buy their first home, but there are programs available, similar to grants for small cities. You can buy a home in this area, the entire county, for one-hundred percent financing, zero gap. You can even get more than one-hundred percent financing. You get some of the closing costs covered. And many people in Juliana and my generation are not even aware of that. You know, they think that it's an impossibility to reach that point. Housing is difficult, so once you get to that point. But it's so great to see their reaction, they realize that it's possible. It even takes a few weeks, months, and then they go for it. And they're brave and invest in the community that they want to invest in, our home. And similarly, when it comes to bigger projects, I've been involved with renovating a property farm that was Morgan Manor down at South Canyon Court. And that's been a real joy, primarily because of the community that has lived there. It's a wonderful property and will be a wonderful property because if people come in and go, it stays the essential community. And it's been a real joy to get to know them that. And that's part of the community development. I have a recent commercial listing for Dunsmere, and that's a challenge. Who can we find that wants to start a business in Dunsmere? And so there's not really too much conflict. If anything, the expertise in real estate will come handy with some tax issues with Dunsmere, but I don't pursue them for any particular reason.
I'm really sure that each of us, as a candidate, is obligated to disclose on a form provided by the Fair Political Practices Commission. It's really rather invasive, but all of your investments, everything you own, all of your sources of income, sources of gifts. And I filled it out very carefully, knowing that my family owns a number of businesses in downtown Dunsmere. And as a government attorney, I mean, I spent decades advising public utility commissioners on the very same issue, including very wealthy Californians with million-dollar portfolios. You know, you can't hold stock in PG&E. You can't take Super Bowl tickets for medicine. But anybody who is interested in my financial interests, whether it's tenants or buildings, or the city law, and asks for a copy of my Form 700, I will be extremely conservative on agenda items that I think are anywhere close to a conflict situation. Of course, I'll consult with the city attorney, I'll consult with the city manager, but if it's anywhere close to a close call, the protocol is to not participate in the discussion, not participate in the decision, and actually to leave the room. That was my practice when I was on the city council in 2008 to 2010. I never want to be a politician. I never want to be accused of doing someone else's job.
I give a very short answer. I have no complex. I am retired. I don't have any professional life. Any interest I pursue as hobbies or any interest take place outside of Dunsmere and they basically take place online. My 700 form is rather short, and I am retired. Thank you.
So there is, excuse me, there is two questions left. One of them, though, I think we've covered quite thoroughly in the notes, how would you obtain grants for fuel reduction and welfare protection for communities? I'm going to answer that one. The other one is, and we're not going to answer this one either. I'll just leave this with a thought for you because you've been two hours sitting here. I think it's been long enough. And that question was, how would you help enhance recreational opportunities for residents and visitors? We all like to recreate, and visitors are mainly someone they come anyway. We won't address that question. But now, I think it's Matthew's time. And if you would like to take a minute or so to wrap it or say anything that you've got before, this is your time to just speak freely.
Well, I'd primarily just like to thank people for putting on this event and thank the citizens of Dunsmere for their care and concern with the community and the effort to serve it, whether in the capacity of a city councillor or just as a concerned citizen with the rest of you. Thank you so much, Ms. Arthur.
Ditto.
Yeah, yay!
Ditto. I just hope to be able to continue serving and accomplish the goals that I haven't yet. I thank the chamber, I thank the board for putting this on, and I thank the major volunteers that are able to put this online so the people that did not, were not able to physically come to this, can still be doing their job.
Yeah, thank you again, similar to everyone else. I appreciate the opportunity that you've been giving all of us to contribute and run for these positions. It's a big responsibility, but it would be wonderful to serve you as a council member. I hope that everyone can join us for the other event that's next Wednesday. And to those event organizers, I hope that there's something for like kids to do. Just to advocate really quick, I know that there's a lot of people who do want to attend these meetings but can't find anyone to watch their kids, even if it is for two hours. So hopefully, we can be better advocates and help out with that family situation. Thank you.
And thank you, candidates. As I mentioned when we started, this is being broadcast live on Facebook Live on the Dunsmere Political Forum and Cocktail Hour, and it will be reposted later on, the Neighborhood Watch site and the Dunsmere Political Battle Ground. So if you missed it or have people want to catch it, you can refer them to those. Also, I just wanted to encourage everyone to vote, to thank you for participating in the democratic process. And not only vote yourself, but encourage people you know to register and vote. And once again, thank you all.